Good evening and welcome to the June 18th Planning Board Meeting. Nancy, please take role.
Commissioner Suarez.
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner Wolson.
Present.
Present. On this meeting, this evening's agenda, we have the approval of meeting minutes, a couple of them. Twenty Marble Dale Road, which is an amended site plan to expand business. One oh eight Sagamore Road, it's a new retaining wall, and two twenty, two twenty-five Marble Dale Road, parking lot replacement at a new retaining wall, and one seventy Marble Dale Road, amended site plan approval. So at this point, I'd like to have, to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June twentieth. Can I have a second?
Second.
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 Okay. Nancy, take role.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Present.
No, no, I'm sorry, just, yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wolson.
Epstein.
Chairman.
Yes. Okay, then I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December nineteenth. Have a second.
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 Okay, so Nancy, please take role.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Epstein.
And Commissioner Wolson.
Yes, approved.
Yes, approved. Okay, so we get those two out of the way. At this point, can we have twenty Marble Dale Road come up and present?
We have a drawing up here, do you need or?
Yeah, yeah, if you could use the, is, I would appreciate it.
Evening, Commissioner, and members of the board. I'm Leonard Brandis, architect for Elcan Industries. I'm here with my assistants Rory Bieber and with Russ Grotto, representing Elcan Industries. We're here to go for a modification from our original approval that we had about twelve years ago, where we had a maximum of twelve to thirteen employees that was approved. Right now, we are running about twenty employees, and we are expecting to be expanding in the next five years to about thirty employees onsite working there. The issue that we have is that we only have ten legitimate parking spaces within our lot, along with the loading dock, so we want to make sure the loading dock's clear so trucks can come in. And so we do have parking on the streets. We did go before the other boards where we did get approval to accept this and sent this to you guys for a final approval, if possible. Trucking-wise, I know there's been discussion we just had in terms of the hours, where we are not going to have any truck deliveries coming in between seven thirty now, seven thirty and ten AM in the morning, and that trucking deliveries will stop after four PM.
No.
This store base closes.
No, I think we're agreeing to a, two to four, I think it is. That's when the school buses are making their rounds, so we're concerned.
That's why we went to seven thirty. Originally, we haven't.
No, no, we're talking about the afternoon drop-off.
Afternoon drop-off?
Yeah, so buses pick up in the morning, then in the evening, they bring them back. So we're concerned about the afternoon drop-off, which is typically anywhere between two to four.
We haven't really been having issues at that two to four, at least that we are aware of. We've never had any problems with that. I mean, it's not a residential block necessarily.
No, it's a commercial block. There's residences that, you know, that they access to that location. I've witnessed ones in the morning. I'm at work in the afternoon, so I don't see them, but I'm sure if they occur in the morning, they also occur in the afternoon. So, yeah, there's some reservations about the, you know, that those trucks will block traffic, and they have blocked traffic, you know, I've witnessed it multiple times. And it takes, depending upon the driver and his skill set, it takes quite a while to get to maneuver the truck into your parking lot.
Well, actually, that wasn't brought to my attention previously about the two o'clock. We did have the morning issues, which we have discussed with the police department, where they've actually had approved to us. We've had agreement with them for a while now, from eight to ten, not to have any deliveries. We haven't had any issues that we've been told about in the afternoon. So, you know, we still need to run a business there. We can't just stop business.
What, what time do you guys close?
Four o'clock.
How long does it take to load up a fifty-five foot truck?
Hour, hour and a half.
That's what I'm saying. So it's, you know, if you close at four and you back up an hour and a half, right, you're literally, you really, the, the, what, so you can't start in, well, it takes, so the latest you could do it is at two thirty, right? So in other words, if the, if the truck comes at two thirty, you got an hour and a half to load them and get them out of there, right? Yeah, so what I'm saying is, you know, you need to end at two thirty so that, you know, we can have traffic move swiftly on Marble Dale Road and Main Street.
I mean, trucks coming in, but they would take that hour and a half, and they'd be leaving at four.
No, but I'm just saying, yes, but, but.
Right, that's, I can understand that happening. That would be reasonable, but it's, once again, it's still, they leave, and they're still leaving our premises at four o'clock.
I know, kids are getting out of school between two thirty and they're going home. So, you know, if your truck is there, you know, trying to get into, into your driveway, and the buses are coming in, it gets very challenging at that area. And again, I've witnessed it in the morning, not in the afternoon, to your point, but again, I'm, I'm working, I'm not, you know, patrolling Marble Dale Road, so.
You had any issues that you've seen in the afternoon?
Never seen it.
The public works people leave at two, the streets basically.
But it has nothing to do with public works. I mean, the public works parks their trucks along, you know, Marble Dale, and I, you know, that's what they typically do, is that it makes it even more challenging because those vehicles are there.
So what the proposal here would be is that they're in by two thirty, so essentially between two thirty and four, there's no traffic going back and forth, so they have to be in by two thirty so they can unload and do whatever, and after four, or if they're out at four, that's fine, but between two thirty and four, they would, there would essentially be traffic with the buses.
The challenge, the challenge is.
We're already starting from ten o'clock, so you're giving us a four and a half hour workday. It's really not a business, we can't, you know, I can't guarantee that truck's going to be there if he gets stuck in traffic. You know, they are going to get to us before four o'clock, obviously, because they want to get it, you know, they want to be able to get out before we close, but I think it's going to be very difficult to guarantee in the middle of the day that there's going to be a problem. It's mostly the problems that we've had in the past was in the morning, because people are also rushing to get to the train in the morning. That's a lot of, you know, it's not so much the bus traffic as much as, you know, personal vehicles traveling down there to get to the train in the morning, that's why we stopped, that's why we stopped the deliveries in the morning. That was the main issue that we've had. We haven't had any issues in the afternoon. There's never been, we've never had any complaints about the afternoon.
Again.
As I said, we do have to run a business.
I, I totally understand, but to Mr. Suarez's point, I mean, if you can get your truck inside the, your facility by two thirty, gives you an hour and a half to, to load it up, and the truck leaves and you guys go home. The issue is, I think the most challenging is getting the truck within your loading dock area, getting out, I don't think that is an issue. The guy can maneuver fairly quickly.
If the truck shows up at three, then are we supposed to be on the street all night?
Well, listen, we're giving you parameters, we, we gave you parameters when we, when you first took over the building, you know, I believe we also set timing and sizes of trucks that were allowed on your premises, and I think, you know, the, if I recall correctly, we were, we were discussing box trucks, and now we got trailers going in there. So, you know, modifications, you know, you guys made modifications to the resolutions that we approved back in, you know, ten years ago.
Can we load trucks after four and all people stay late? Can we load trucks after four and have to pay overtime to people to stay late?
But I mean, yeah, as long as, you know, as long as you're up, I mean, school is typically...
Mr. Chair, why don't we, Mr. Semenera had a good idea. Leave the afternoon at the discretion of the Chief of Police.
Okay.
And what he'll do is monitor that, and if it becomes a problem, then he can limit it to whatever he feels it needs to be limited to.
You don't think we need, we need to put a minimum?
We'll set the morning parameters, and then the afternoon we'll leave in the discretion of the chief.
If you're okay with it.
If you guys are okay with that.
So the school bus usually, what, the school ends about two thirty?
Yeah.
Two thirty, right? So pick up, and then what, half hour to, to start making rounds?
So the problem is that Rogers Street, which is the residential street.
Right.
So they come down Winter Hill, they make the right on the Marble Dale Road, they make the left on the Rogers, and they do that whole area back there. They, they did, to do that loop, and typically, they pull out back on Marble Dale and go home. So that transition of that time period is really what we're trying to.
No, and Rogers Street is very close to, you know.
A block, not same, same, next.
Yeah, it's around that corner, right.
And there's a lot of, you know, that's a whole bus.
Yes.
So that's the problem. It picks up Rogers, it picks up Columbus Avenue and goes loops back. So it's a lot of kids, so it's not, it's like one or two bus loops. I don't, you know, if the chief, it's up to you guys, if the, if the chief doesn't see a problem with it, or we don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with it either. The problem is if it, it becomes a problem, what do we do? Send them back to the site plan approval again? It's a problem.
But the thing, yeah.
That's why it makes sense to have it.
Yeah, I agree.
And then it can be modified by the chief.
Yeah, correct. That's what was my thought.
Yeah, I, we need to, I think we need to have a baseline, and then the chief can monitor it, right? Because we did have a baseline, and we've had issues as a result of, you know, even, even with the baselines in place.
That's up to you guys.
We've, we've had issues. Yeah.
It was just a suggestion, I don't know.
No, no, I, I, which is fine, I mean.
As I said, the issues we've had that we've been, you know, that have been identified as were always morning issues, not afternoon issues. But if there are, and as, like I was saying, there's only a couple of buses that we're dealing with, we're not dealing with a large amount of buses going back and forth.
I, I agree with that.
So if we can, if we can have it with the police chief monitoring, we certainly, we've had agreements with them in the past, we certainly would work with whatever they need. And that's, we obviously, we're trying to be a good neighbor always, you know, they've always been a good neighbor to this town, they're doing best they can, so.
Anybody, any opinions on this?
If we can work it so it works with the police chief on their approvals.
Well, I agree with keeping the time, but letting it be monitored by the chief of police.
What time do you do, what do you think? Because right now, I think we're proposing two thirty to four. Any opinions?
I think it's okay to keep that time that we're proposing, the two thirty to four.
Right.
But of course, with some flexibility, where if the, if the truck, the truck shows up at three, you know, we might be, you know, we can proceed as necessary, but occasional monitoring by the police, and that would help as well. So it's, it's not set in stone that it has to be two thirty to four, but we just have those parameters there as a baseline, like the Commissioner said, or the Chair said.
A long time for a truck to back in, a long time for a truck to back in is usually three minutes, anyway. So it's a three-minute thing that's then costing us an hour and a half.
Right, so within reason, it shouldn't really matter if it's only going to be three minutes. You know, you should be able to do what you need to do, like the time shouldn't.
But if I can't back it in during that hour and a half, it costs us an hour and a half.
Well, again, going back to the math, right, I mean, realistically, you close at four, it takes an hour and a half to load the truck, right? The truck has to be there by two thirty in order for you, for everything to work properly, correct? Is the math, right?
Yes.
Math correct, right? So we're saying, you know, a guy shows up at two thirty, parks his vehicle, shows up at two forty-five, gets to park his vehicle, not, not an issue. If he, if he shows up at four, for argument's sake, you're paying overtime regardless, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not sure why we're still arguing over this. I mean, if you have some flexibility, I think everyone's open to a little bit of flexibility, you know, but again, it also depends on the experience of the driver, right?
That's, yeah.
You've had drivers that take.
We, we deal with it all the time.
And again.
They don't even know how, we don't know how they got a license.
Exactly, and I've, I've been witness to one of those instances where I sat there on Rogers Street and, you know, took photographs and complained to him.
Yeah, it's not, it's not fun. Obviously, they're not our licensed drivers, our guys are trained to help them back in and everything else. We'll do the best.
And I, and that's, and I, again, that's why I feel at this point comfortable leaving at two thirty, I don't think, unless it becomes an issue, I'm sure someone will enforce it, but I think at this point, I, I think we all feel comfortable leaving at a two thirty to four. If it becomes an issue, you know, we'll revisit it. If it doesn't become an issue.
You just have to be mindful that there are buses and every, you know what I mean? Like, everybody has to get through.
Talking about two buses passing through.
Exactly.
For an hour and a half of time of where we.
Well, by the same token, this doesn't, this doesn't change your, your operations very much, because either way, as the Chair said, if you want to be out of there by four, they have to be there by two thirty, correct? So this does, it's not an impediment on you guys.
If a truck comes and just has a delivery that's going to take a half hour, you know, it's that, we don't always.
Your deliveries are typically done in the morning, from what I recall. Is that, is that not true?
It's out of our control.
Yeah, but, whatever.
Speaking throughout the day.
I mean, yeah.
But again, this is, so we have it there as a baseline, this isn't a hard and fast rule where someone's going to be there and say at two thirty, this can't be done anymore, you guys have to close down. We have it there as a baseline, we want to basically just get a temperature for it, see how it's going to proceed. If we see that it's constantly happening where between two thirty and four, there are, there's movement going on and there's traffic, then at that point, we revisit the conversation and things might change, but we just want it there as a baseline to just say, hey, look, try your best not to do anything during these hours, but if one day you have to be flexible and allow for a delivery or for someone to load up, what have you, so be it. But that's what we're saying, that the police chief will monitor it just to see how things are proceeding.
And it's also, I just, it's also, that corner is a very busy corner. I mean, that park is being utilized on a regular basis. I mean, there's kids after school, and now that summer's coming, they're going to be there all afternoon, morning, you know, and that park is heavily used. Cars park along Marble Dale, and it's not like you're going to have empty parking spaces as well. I mean, those guys, those kids are there from, you know, the morning to ten o'clock in the evening, so there's, there's a lot going on in your little corner, so again, this is what we feel comfortable with, let me, let us know what you want to do.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there buses the next three months over the summer or no?
I'm saying, sorry.
Buses the next three months over the summer?
No.
No.
So can we have that restriction removed during the summer months, during all school? As part of it, you're restricting us from having, running a business, it's, it's difficult.
But during, during the summer months, you wouldn't affect the busing.
It wouldn't affect the bus, that's what I'm saying, so if we can have that, at least add that into it.
I, I don't think that they're restricting you, and tell me if I'm wrong, what they're saying to you is between two thirty and four, if it's, if, if the police chief doesn't call us and say it's a problem, and it's not a problem, if he calls the building department and says it's a problem, then we'll have to cite you to say go back to the board, or you have to stay within the parameters. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not telling you you can't do it unless it becomes a problem. So if the chief sees that it's becoming a problem, he's going to send us an email to the building department, say, hey, they're blocking the buses at two forty-five, they need to be restricted. Then we would come see you guys, guys, you gotta stay within the parameter of two thirty to four, or we need to go back to the planning board. I think that's the way I'm seeing it, correct, guys?
You're correct.
Okay, so.
Gary, can it be put into.
That's what he's going to put in.
Writing that way, that's, that's all I would request. And then, once again, that we can get the summer months off, that it's not restricting during the summer months.
Leaving it as is, I mean, at this point, I mean, we need to move on. Is this okay or not? Okay, thank you. All right, any questions from the board? At this point, I make a motion to open a public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Is anyone here to speak in this application? Since there's no one here to speak on this application, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Planning Board Resolution Decision. Applicant Owner: Elcan Industries Incorporated. Location of Project 181 Main Street, also known as Twenty Marble Dale Road in Tuckahoe, Section sixty-eight, Block four, Lot fifty E. Description of Project: Amend existing site plan. The following is the Resolution Decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tuckahoe, New York. Applicant has an approved site plan for its business located at 181 Main Street, also known as Twenty Marble Dale Road in Tuckahoe. Applicant's business has expanded over the past several years, and the applicant is looking to legalize the expanded business. Applicant is looking for a maximum of thirty employees and has limited onsite parking. Applicant has been utilizing the ample metered street parking. We find that this situation is acceptable. We also find that the proposed layout of the parking lot is acceptable. We find, based on the work sessions and presentations at the public hearing, that the applicant has met its burden as to Section seven-one of the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code, and therefore, the application is approved based on the following conditions. One, truck deliveries to the business shall not take place between the hours of seven thirty AM to ten AM Monday through Friday, and two thirty PM to four PM Monday through Friday. Two, there shall be no outside storage. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. Meeting Date: June 18th, 2024.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Nancy, take role.
Commissioner Suarez.
In favor.
Commissioner Carpenter.
In favor.
Commissioner Wolson.
In favor.
Chair.
In favor. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Can, do we have one oh eight Sagamore? Good evening. Speak into the microphone. Identify yourself, your address, and the project you're representing.
I'm Peter Landy, I'm the contractor for one oh eight Sagamore Road.
Right.
For the construction of the retaining wall.
Okay.
Guys, got any questions?
Yes, so we sent your, the documentation you presented us a couple of months ago to our consultants, and our consultants, I guess, came back and said everything looks great. The only thing we're looking for, from you, is what is, what does the wall look like? In other words, what is the material that's on the wall itself?
The wall.
Do you have any images of?
The finished product is going to be just straight concrete, but.
Straight concrete.
We had a work session last two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And between one of the people that were at the work session, plus Bill Williams, suggested possibly putting colorized stucco on the finish of the wall.
Okay.
If that would be acceptable.
Do you, have you, have you guys selected a color that you want to utilize?
Bill Williams, according, you guys were going to pick it out.
We're going to pick it out? Typically, you come with a proposal, and then we'll say, oh, it looks great, or whatever, you know, we don't live there, at the end of the day, it's a.
I mean, it has to be probably a cream color, because the building is brownish cream.
Okay, hold on, let's see if I can see, it's an interior, right, it's an interior wall, right, if I recall correctly?
No, it's an exterior.
On the left side, but you, but it's.
Set back.
Okay, let's see what it looks like. Give me a second.
If we go slow enough.
Yeah, why not?
It's, it's like set back under a, I don't know if you call it an awning, concrete awning.
Can, can you show me where the wall is going to be, I, I mean.
Yeah, it's on the left, then.
This wall back here? Yeah.
Are you going to Google that?
Yeah. Is it back here?
Ah, shoot, I just lost it.
Hold on, sorry. Just lost it. Is it back here? The wall? Where's the wall? This is the wall, the wall right here? So currently, it looks like it's a beige product, so yeah, probably a good idea to do a beige.
Mm-hmm.
You want to, just to pick a color for you?
I got you.
Yeah, what's up?
beige is it?
Want to pick a color?
Sure.
exterior decorators. Here's the theme book.
Yeah, let me see that book.
These, do not look at these.
I won't look at those. All right, just these, all right. All right, go ahead. To the white, linen, sand.
Not too stony.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, it's pretty light to begin with, right?
Those colors would look all brown.
I don't know if you want to see it, Henry.
I guess question, which most closely resembles a building?
Yeah, that one.
Well, Billy's two-tone, basically. Which one do you like? All right, sand dollar. Sand dollar, you okay? All right, cool. All right, so sand dollar's the winner. I'm going to put an X next to it, is that all right?
Great.
All right.
Easy.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board?
No.
So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here to speak on this application? Since there's no one here to speak on this application, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Suarez. Planning Board Resolution Decision. Applicant Owner: Location of Project one oh eight Sagamore Road, Tuckahoe, Section twenty-seven, Block seven, Lot one. Description of Project: Structural work to an existing retaining wall. SECRE resolution pursuant to the regulations of the, of SECRE. This board finds that the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of this, of SECRE and its implementing regulations. This board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. That, that the action taken herein shall have, not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
I make a second. Nancy, take role, please.
Commissioner Suarez.
In favor.
Commissioner Carpenter.
In favor.
Commissioner Wolson.
In favor.
And Chairman.
In favor.
The following is the Resolution Decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tuckahoe, New York. Applicant is seeking to repair an existing retaining wall at the property located at one oh eight Sagamore Road, Tuckahoe. This board has referred this application to the village's engineer, and our engineer has no objection as to the proposed plans. We find, based on the work sessions and presentations at the public hearing, that the applicant has met its burden as to Section seven-one of the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code, and therefore, the application is approved based on the following condition. Applicant shall use the finish on the wall as presented at the public hearing.
That was sand dollar, right? That was sand dollar, right? The number?
Yes, sand dollar.
What was the number?
Eighty thirty-six.
Thank you.
Let the record show, sand dollar? Eighty thirty-six. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. Meeting date, June 18th, 2024.
I second, Nancy can you have a quick take roll?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Thank you very much, and good luck, now you can finally build.
I'd be very happy.
Okay, enjoy yourself. At this point, can we have 225 Marble Dale?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Allison Fauser, I'm an associate attorney with the law firm Cuddy &amp; Fader, appearing on behalf of Verizon. With me tonight is our project engineer, as well as our project manager from Verizon. This is relative to the Verizon facility located at 225 Marble Dale. It's been a little while, but we were last before you in November and December, at which time we gave you a comprehensive presentation. I'm not sure if the board wants us to go through everything, or just give you updates since we were last before you.
If you don't mind, just a, just a quick presentation, not, nothing extensive, so just, so that everyone at home can just see exactly what we're proposing, rather than going, trying to go back six months, seven months, try to find the.
I'll give you a couple sentence overview, and then I will defer to our project engineer on specifics. But at its core, this proposal is relative to mitigating existing conditions on the property. So we're dealing with a lot of flooding, so we're proposing various stormwater management techniques and facilities on the property. It's also intended to stabilize a lot of the shifts in topography that we're dealing, especially with the multifamily residents to the adjacent area. So we have some retaining walls as well throughout the site. But Yuri, if I can defer to you, just to talk more specifics about the stormwater management program.
Good evening, my name is Yuri Topichak, Key Civil Engineering. So for stormwater, we are, we have an existing pump. There's a catch basin that captures the water, and there's only one catch basin for the entire parking lot that drains into a pump, and that pump discharges to a sewer in the street. We are proposing a few more catch basins to control the water, and that those catch basins will take the water into an underground detention system. And then we'll release at a slower rate, so the pumps can catch up and get the water out of the site and into the sewer. So that will prevent the flooding in here.
Okay, and so, Mr. Semenera, the, our consultant has reviewed the design, made comments, and it's all approved at this point?
Correct, they made some changes, and they went back and forth, I think we're all set.
Okay, great, thank you.
With that brief overview, so since we were last before you, we did get sign-off letters from your outside consultants, we also revised the plans to include privacy fencing along the rear and side lot lines. That's what the board requested at the December meeting. We also got a copy of the county comments, and that relates to management of those stormwater facilities. Verizon's completely amenable to providing a maintenance program to the building department for their review and sign-off. It'll just detail what we're doing on a regular basis to make sure that, you know, none of those facilities are gonna be overflowing.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Alright, anyone from the board have any questions on this applicant?
Not at this point.
At this point, okay, so at this point, I make a motion to open the public hearing, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here to speak on this application? At this point, I make a motion to close the public hearing, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So at this point, uh, wanna read this one? Village of Tuckahoe, Planning Board Resolution. Applicant owner is Horizon Global, Global Real Estate. Location on the project is 225 Marble Dale Road, Tuckahoe, New York. Section 39, Block 4, Lot 1D. Description of project, improvements to the property including underground drainage, pave the parking lot, onsite sidewalk replacement, and replacement of existing retaining walls. Secra Resolution pursuant to regulations of Secra, this board finds that the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of Secra and its implementing regulations. Two, this board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. The act number three, the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and is, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Nancy take a roll?
Commissioner S. Lawrence.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. The following is a Resolution Decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tuckahoe, New York. Applicant Horizon Global Real Estate is seeking to improve its property at 225 Marble Dale Road in Tuckahoe. The property is currently in disrepair and is prone to severe flooding. The applicant proposes to improve the underground drainage, pave the parking lot, replace the onsite sidewalks, and replace the existing retaining walls. This board has referred this application to the village engineers, and all engineers have no objections as to the proposed plans. We find that, find based on the work session and presentations at the public hearing that the applicant has met its burden as to the 7-1 of the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code, and therefore the application is approved with the following condition based on the feedback from Westchester County. One, prior to a permit being issued, the applicant must provide a stormwater system maintenance program that is approved by the building inspector. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall be a cause for the revocation of said approval. June 18th, 2024, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Nancy take a roll?
Commissioner S. Lawrence.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Alright guys, good luck, let's get this thing done, alright, alright, have a great night. Alright, so next is 170 Marble Dale. Mr. Barbuti, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Barbuti, Architect, representing Automotive Upholstery for a site plan amendment for the concrete retaining wall in the rear yard at 170 Marble Dale Avenue. We're here tonight, basically we had, got approval, I believe it was three years ago?
Yeah, roughly.
Uh, for the wall. We've been back a few times, because there were some hiccups along the way. Finally, the wall is up, there were four minor modifications, really. So based on a retaining wall survey prepared by senior surveys, surveyors, after wall was constructed, it got moved a little bit slightly off to where it originally was. That's indicated on a dotted line on the site plan. The contractor who's presently working on the job as a cost-saving expense, instead of doing the riprap on the slope, he's proposing a four-to-six inch stone set and compacted into the slope as a slope stabilization. It's presently there, I have pictures of that if you'd like to see. And the height of the wall, on the south end of the wall was lowered approximately five feet due to the modification of the wall location, actually got pushed closer to the street, so it gave us a little bit more room to slope the hillside. And lastly, which is the big one, originally it was approved with the stone veneer. It's, basically it's an exorbitant amount of money from what my client was originally told in the beginning by his first contractor, so it's basically a monetary issue at this point. So to face the wall that was originally approved would be around $175,000, and it's just, it's really not cost-effective. We've come up with a couple of schemes, I think, I'm not sure if you received an email today, but I've got some renderings done using different stucco materials, stucco patterns, trying to make it look like a block. Also squared pattern to make it look similar to the building next door. So tried a couple of variations.
Okay, I, I have several questions specifically about the height of the wall. And it seems to me that it's taller than the original design of the wall. I just, because I have the old drawings, right? And I guess the southern part closest to the new building, right? I, I think in your original. I think the, in your original design, the tallest wall, I think was nineteen six? It just, it just feels like the wall's got bigger.
Actually, I believe they got smaller.
Well, okay, on your new plan here, you have it at 21 feet. On your old plan, you have it as nineteen, I'm sorry, a new plan, yeah, the wall is 21 feet. On the old set, it's nineteen six, so. I read, the sections aren't coordinated, so I can't tell exactly where it was, oh, no, they are. Seven.
So at the north side, the exposed wall height was 10 feet on your.
No, I'm referring to the one closest to the, the, the new building, right? So basically at this location here, Mr. Barbuti?
Oh, let's do the storage building.
Yeah, right, so, right here.
One second, let me look at, it was, you have it at 21, I'm assuming it's. No, we gotta look at this number here.
And the other one was nineteen six. And the interesting part is, you moved the wall closer to us, right? So in other words, you, you ran into some issues.
Came out of the slope, right.
Right, so you moved the wall closer to the street, meaning the wall's gotten. I'm a little bit confused as to why.
So, the wall heights haven't changed. So we came back year and a half ago.
Yeah.
There was an issue with the first contractor, we came back, we did the north end of the wall, and we got permission to do just the north end of the wall at the steep slope.
Right.
Then a plan was submitted, and we received the approval from the building department to move forward with the south end of the wall. It's always been 20 feet.
What, again, what I don't understand, again, forgive me, is that the original wall was, you know, maybe about, let's put this dimension. So if you look at the, the depth from your property line, right? You have, this is approx, I'm guessing at this point, right? So this is here, right? Now you're here, so you're pulling this forward, so the wall should have dropped because it's a slope.
That's not the latest point, that's not the last, but your point.
I have, this is my set that I received in 2022, this is from me.
I, I mean, I'd have to go back and look, this went through a number of iterations.
But I believe, wasn't this the one that was approved?
I would have to go back and look, I don't know if you could.
Okay.
So I know this wall over here.
Yeah.
At one point was 26 or 27 feet.
Okay.
We brought it forward, it was at 20 feet. I mean, I have everything logged and dated, I could forward you.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, because at this point, I mean, I just, again, don't understand why it should have, it should have been, the wall should have reduced in size, not remain the same.
This may have been the very first approval.
Yeah, goes back, because I had another one, and it has the same dates on it, so can you just check?
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, but like I says, I think it was originally just 26 or 27 feet.
Right.
And then we moved it forward, and it came down to 20 feet, and was pretty much consistent, 2018, and then towards the north end, it was somewhere around between 11 and 14 feet.
Again, I'm looking at the sections you provided us, right? And, yeah, this one should have been 17. Alright, so I, I'd like to see the progression of the drawings you submitted to the building department, and, and understand what happened with this wall. Because it's, it should have, because you moved the wall forward, it should have actually been lower, not, not at that elevation. So I'm a little concerned about that, because it's a, it's a large wall. Alright. So let's just stay, so I'd like to see that. And the second thing is, I'd like to talk about the, the treatment of that wall. Okay? You wanna show us your proposals, so that we can review? Do you have a photograph of what the existing wall currently looks like? For people at home? Now just put, can you clip it on your board, so we can all see? Yeah.
Basically right now, so bare concrete.
Yeah. Grab the microphone.
Right, so right now it's bare concrete wall, exposed concrete.
Right.
As I indicated, the original intent, you know, I was looking, trying to figure out what to do, some sort of a pattern, a scoring pattern. I looked at the adjacent building, I says, you know, maybe let's look at it that way, and just do like a stacked look, wasn't really too happy with that. So we did another one, where it's basically similar sized block. I actually, you know, playing around with the proportions, but where it looks actually like a stacked, larger old masonry wall.
Right, so when I first saw those, my, my first concern was that, I mean, I walked by your facility, and I saw, I've been, I've been watching the wall, and it's just a very massive wall, and it's currently like, I agree, because it's just natural concrete. Your, your proposal is to apply stucco on this product, which is, looks like a lighter color closer to the adjacent building. I'm just concerned that it's just gonna become another massive wall. I mean, if you look at the upper left photograph, I mean, it's, it's a massive wall. And again, I still don't under, I still don't understand why it had to be, be that tall. I mean, I'm looking, can, can I, can I show you something for a second? I'm sorry, I'm gonna, this is the photograph, again, I don't, I don't understand why it has to be, it had to be that, that tall. It could have been lowered, to, you know, to, you know, to give you a better.
They're not finished with degrading up on the top.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Alright, so, so again, the concern I have, it's a large wall, I'm not sure it needed to be that tall. But the concern that I personally have is, it's just a, a big block of wall, and you, we need to figure out a way to kind of break the massing up. You know, I, I'm not sure if you do it color, texture, but right now, that wall is just an eyesore, to be totally frank with you, in my opinion. You know, I know you've tried some, some, you know, decorative treatments to it, but I don't, I'm not sure you're, you're solving the real issue, which is, it's just a big wall. You know, I don't know if you need to add trees in front of it.
So if you see one of them, and I just, I'm basically to scale. I mean, we're trying to do some landscaping in front, along this side, those are eight feet.
I know, and your wall's 20 feet, so it doesn't, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, so we need to figure out a way to kind of, how do we break up the massing, so it doesn't look so massive? My personal opinion, alright, I'm not sure if anyone else on the board has any other concerns, or, or maybe I'm overblown, making this a big deal, but have any question, any thoughts on this proposal? That was my immediate thought, because we received these this afternoon.
Right.
So I'd like you to, to look at that, and try to figure out a way how we, how we can bring the scale of the wall down. In your other submittals, you had the fence stepping back into the, into the hill. This proposal shows that the fence is sitting on top of the wall. You know, I'm not sure, for example, if you put, move the fence back, do some planting along the top of the wall, the kind of bees, or. Again, I'm trying to, you, you gotta look at ways to kind of bring this down. Alright, and then, what's happening with the stormwater management system, is that going in?
So that, so it's twofold, we were at the work session, you know, we had a conversation with Mr. Williams, Mr. Wolfson. We're waiting for the contractor to do the work. We're kind of at, he doesn't want to start work until he gets an okay that he could leave the four-to-six inch stone on the top, instead of doing a riprap, because presently as it is over here, we've got a mound of dirt.
I know.
Which is using as a, basically a lift, where he can get his machine up there, put the residual, or the rest of the gravel up on the top, and finalize the top. That mound then gets pushed to the north end, and we continue with doing the work in the parking lot.
Yeah, the problem with all that stone up there, just, again, visually it just brings your wall up even further. You know? So yeah, I mean, again, I'm looking at the photograph I took while I walk at night, and it just makes it taller.
I don't know if you guys want to see it, but.
You know, so, yeah, I have reservations about that, so I think we need to, we need to take some time and, and figure out what to do here, you know, to do it correctly.
Okay.
Alright, and then the other thing is, right now, your, your yard is, you got a lot of stuff going on there. I mean, cars, it's unfinished, it's trailers, it's, it's, it's a little bit of an eyesore now. I know there's a lot of things in motion, but, you know, I'm not sure how you're gonna put your, your, your drainage system in when you have all that stuff lying around.
So, the trailers, I know he's emptying out, he's gotta get rid of the trailers. He's putting them in a car trailer at this point, so that can be, you know, moving around.
What does that mean?
It's a car trailer, you know, it's a trailer where you put cars in.
Yeah.
So instead of having those boxes there, he's gonna put it in a trailer, and he's gonna take it off the site.
Okay, you're taking the stuff off the site?
Right.
Okay.
It's an operating business.
Oh, I get that.
Even before this, the parking lot was full of cars.
Yeah, no question, I understand.
So it's, you know, it's kind of hard, he's got a, you know, jockey cars around. It looks like a mess, because I got a contractor that doesn't want to move forward to get this top done, because, you know.
Yeah.
So we've got a lot of things that are.
I understand.
Butting heads.
Right, so I, I think, you know, we'll try to help you, but, you know, we need to come up with some solutions to kind of overcome some of these issues. Yeah, I, I, I know exactly what your property looked like, I understood that, and you chose to put the wall up, you know, it, this, yeah, you had a lot of greenery, I get that part, you had the trees, you took all the trees out, and you made that into a 20-foot retaining wall.
I've had people that come by in town, and they've said.
Speak, speak it to the microphone, I'm sorry.
I've had people come by and look at the property, but I guess you walk by and you say it's an eyesore. There are people say it looks so much better, property looks bigger, and I, I don't understand why it's, it's, I think with the, the way the pictures are shown, it's going to look good. It looks better than, to me, than I just showed you a picture of all trees down there. And I, I don't know, I just, I think it looks better.
But that's, again, that's, that's debatable.
Look at it, they, they didn't see the green, all weeds growing there, does that look bad to what it looks like now? Can we ask anybody else?
Yeah, sure, by all means, you know, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, you took away the greenery, right, and you put up this massive 20-foot wall, I understand why you did it, you want to increase your parking lot, you want, I, I get that part, right? But it's, to me, it's not that big retaining wall. It's just massive, I mean, it's, it's a massive wall, you know? And, and we could have, you know, potentially done a different solution, where you could have stepped, I think at one point there was a discussion about stepping it back, you know, doing a terracing, so that, you know, you kind of alleviated, you know, the, the visual size of that wall. But I'm not sure what happened to that.
I mean, the original plan was, the whole thing came about was, was gonna be the wall, and then there was gonna go a building, because I have to do it in steps, I can't just throw a building up and retaining wall, I don't have the funds for that, but.
Right.
So I thought the wall would start the process, and then we put a building in front of it, it would be hidden away. But now.
That's great.
I can't do it, because it's.
The problem now, now we have a large wall, where you can build potentially two or three-story, you know, building there, but, you know, you're not gonna do that potentially for another, who knows, five years, 10 years, two years? I, I don't know that, but we're, we're gonna be living with this wall until you do that. You know, so, and that, and that's, so at this point, I'd like to find a way to kind of, you know, soften that mass.
If they, you know, how the, the building has the, the two-tone on there, can we put like, like columns, or, you know, to separate the?
No, I, I get it, and that's what we're looking for. If, I, I would like you to do is, on the next work, workshop, you know, come up and come up with some solutions that we can all review, you know, and hopefully we come up with something that we're all happy with, or, you know, or happy as a short-term solution so that when you decide to fully develop your site, you know, it's a moot point.
I mean, better is subjective, right? So someone might walk by and say, oh, this looks better. That doesn't necessarily mean it looks good. So what I would say, the picture on the bottom left, where it has some color to it and you have some greenery in front of it, I think that would be an improvement upon what it currently looks like. Because the thing is.
There are two proposals there, it's just.
Yeah, the only difference is the way, is the way the brick is, you know, either stacked or, or stacked or staggered, I mean, if I, if I recall correctly, right? Those are, there's two options. It's, it's basically the same, it's, it's, it's either the joints are vertical or just like a brick stack.
But I, I mean, for, for, for purposes, like, obviously, it's what you guys are gonna like, is, so if I suggest putting color in the middle of it to break it up like the here and here.
That might be, that might be a solution, yeah. That, it could be as simple as, you know.
If you go and do that and you don't like, I don't, is that something that would be?
Again, I, I don't know, I'm asking you guys to, to come up with a solution, you know? Hopefully, we can massage it to, to something. But, you know, I'm not sure how your neighbor's gonna feel if you take his colors and just bring them across, you know, so maybe we should have a discussion with your neighbor about that. But again, just something, you know, to break up that large mass. Again, it could be paint, it could be, whatever, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, increasing the size of the trees might take away from the height of the, the wall, at, at least the perception of it.
Aberrites get 10, they're 10 feet, when you get them, they're 10 feet high, that's, that's half the wall.
Yeah. I, my aberrite is over 20 feet now, but it took 10 years, but.
I can, I, I think you have options. I'd like you to explore those options, come back to us, you know? Hopefully, maybe some of us can come up with some, you know, a thought, you know, that we could share with you at the work session. But again, you know, I, I'd like to resolve, I'll, I'll make the wall softer. Right now, it's just.
Antonio, real fast, so if, are you guys okay with the top of the wall? Because let's say, because that's really, the only reason why I bring this up is because he can continue to do his construction.
I get it.
We're a dead stall there.
I know. Is there any way you can soften that up? I mean, why is it, does it have to be stone up there? Can you, can, because again, all, all you're doing at this point is just extending your wall up visually.
The problem with that is, you know, you introduced soil, now I've got, you know, 30-degree slopes, now I gotta vegetate it, and once you.
Get, get into your, sorry. Start again.
So I've got a 30-degree slope in some spots, a little bit steeper, so once I put veget, you know, dirt on top of that, now I've got to somehow stabilize that.
Isn't there dirt underneath the, the current?
So basically, what happened was all that got dug out between this contractor and the previous contractor, took a lot of the soil away from the site.
Oh.
That's all gravel, from the bottom of the wall up, five or eight feet back, that's.
That's all gravel?
That's all gravel. So there's no soil, I mean, that's, you know, so the whole idea of the gravel is, whatever hits that comes down, goes into the, into the drywells.
Yeah.
That, that was the whole thing, because I didn't want any hydrostatic pressure behind the wall. What about adding?
Yeah.
What did they?
So what they, what they did basically is, is kind of, if I recall correctly, it's like a 4x4 mesh, and it's basically a seeded mesh, and they're just gonna lay it on the floor, tie it down, and it's gonna grow.
They put grass seed in it, essentially.
It grows.
It looks like an ivy wall or something.
So on, so you're talking on the wall or on the slope?
On the slope.
On the slope.
Okay.
So basically, I, I forgot what it's called.
It was kind of like a jutinetting?
Unsullied.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, I mean, you put your stone, but then, you know, maybe just put something so that it'll grow, you know, it doesn't require a lot of dirt, but actually, they have dirt, so that's a different story.
Yeah, you always, so in order to have.
Yeah.
Nothing's gonna grow up there with, with gravel.
Nah.
Nothing's gonna grow up there with gravel. But then what's gonna happen with the fence that's up there?
So I need the fence there as protection, so when the neighbors.
Right, but is it gonna be on top of the wall, is it gonna be behind it? Because that's.
The rendering is kind of off, because when I told my guy, I want it at the property line, because that's the original intention, because I don't want the neighbors on the property.
Yep. Because right now, it's sitting on a wall you're showing.
No, no, I know, and, and you know what? It's, it's, I've been kicking this back and forth, and I just got the guy, and he just sort of understands what I'm looking for, for some reason.
All right, whatever.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
But that'll get fixed by next meeting, you know?